Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, June 1st Council Land and Shore Committee. This evening we have three items on our agenda. Sorry, we have five. No, four items on our agenda. First, we will be discussing AB 7215 and AB 7417. They will be presented jointly. We will then be discussing AB 7110 Windward-Bergsma Development Agreement. And our last item for tonight is a vertical mixed-use presentation. Stacy Goodman, who normally chairs this committee, is not available today, and so I'll be standing in for her in chairing. And we have council member Toll and Martz filling out our committee today, so we have three members. So Keith Nivenstaff will present the first two items, AB 7215 and AB 7417.
Thank you very much, and good evening. So the first two agenda items, or the first two agenda bills relate to the same item, which is a proposal to add 100 transfer of development rights into Isiqua Highlands by Polygon Northwest. And I don't have, so I'm going to start by saying I don't have any new material, random material, so I'm going to recycle an old presentation that you guys have already seen, just to really get us back into the frame of mind. And then we're going to talk about kind of what was attached to this agenda and what information might we still be talking about. So what we're talking about is should the city approve 100 transfer development rights into Isiqua Highlands? How many units are part of this conversation? Is there an infrastructure impact that has not been evaluated? Is 10-10-10 okay? And that relates to the affordable housing that might come with this proposal. Should the city agree to include Parcel D, which is a city-owned piece of property, in the proposal? And what does that mean? What is it worth? And is there sufficient value to offset the inclusion of that piece of property? Locationally, to get everybody oriented geographically with what we're talking about. So Parcel D, I'll start over here. This is Park Drive up here on the north. This is 15th. College Drive comes in and T's pretty much right at 15th. And then Falls Drive works its way to the south. And this is about 1.1 acres of land. What Polygon Northwest owns is currently shown on this graphic to the left. It's a combination of single-family and multiple, multifamily projects, so single-family detached and townhouses. And then what we've been talking about is if the affordable housing goes into what's called the Westridge neighborhood, it's been identified to go in this location over here on the left. So last we talked about this proposal, a number of questions were raised by the committee. And I'm going to go to the memo. Oops, let me try the other one. Sweet. And so we prepared a memo for tonight's meeting. And really, kind of the conversation was broken into two pieces. One was about kind of infrastructure and whether or not there were any remaining infrastructure concerns that the committee might have related to putting 100 additional units into Isiqua Highlands. And then the second piece was surrounding the affordable housing. And there were a number of questions associated with that. So there were actually, the first memo addressed kind of the general comments and questions. And then there's a second memo attached, which is more specifically about affordable housing and why would the administration be supporting inclusion of Parcel D into this overall conversation? So that's my summary. I'm willing to stop there, except that there's kind of another kind of twist to this. And I don't know if Polygon wants to present that, if they want me to go ahead and just put that on the table. And then as we talk more in detail, we can unpack that if we would like to. And that is, bless you. And that is, so part of the conversation that has happened previously in committee has been that what would this look like if Parcel D was not included? If the city was not ready to include Parcel D into this proposal, what would the affordable housing piece of this puzzle look like? And so in talking that through with Polygon, Polygon prepared, call it option C maybe, an idea that would not include Parcel D. And what that would be, and y'all got that just tonight, I apologize for not getting that to you earlier, it was kind of late in baking. But basically, what they would be willing to propose is that if Parcel D was not on the table, that they would provide 10 affordable housing units in Westridge in addition to their 100 TDRs. Those 10 units would be townhouses at, did we land on 60% AMI? So at 60% AMI, and they would be mixed kind of through the neighborhood. And if you can, if you want me to go back to the land plan, that would be helpful at this time, I can do that. So this is Westridge right here, and these two neighborhoods kind of in the middle of their property were planned to be townhouses. And so those 10 affordable units would be mixed somewhere in those townhouse parcels. So that's another option. If the council feels uncomfortable making a commitment on Parcel D, that there's another choice to still move this forward, and it would include 10 units in Westridge.
Okay.
So hopefully that's a good overview.
So for the committee members, there are some answers to questions that you may want more detail on, but there's also a new proposal. So would you like Polygon to come up and go through the new proposal, and then we'll go to Q and A?
Yes, please.
Okay. Nick, thank you.
And if you want to put them up on the screen, make sure they're there.
We will get them out to the website.
Just let me see if I can steer this correctly.
You don't want to go to the PDF to act, but I don't want to, and I think, not a balance.
These are my two. Oh, let's just do this for a second. So first of all, Nick Abdalnar, Polygon Northwest, good to see you again, and hello, Toll. First, I want to thank Keith and Arthur Sullivan from Arch and Keith Niven from the city for taking the time over the last several months to work with us and the council committee and the city council to work on the 100 TDRs being received to our property in the Highlands. I think they did a great job in re-watching the videos and answering all of the questions, I think upwards of 10 of them, from the last land and shore. But I want to spend a couple minutes going to a piece that both Arthur and Keith, I'm going to try to do this for you guys, created. And this is all due to you, the committee, answering or asking this question, which was, I'd like an audit of what is out there. And I thought it was a great question. And if it wasn't for Arthur, you know, as a third party, you know, and Keith doing the legwork over the life of this development agreement, probably would have taken a lot longer than getting this done in less than 30 days. But fortunately, the information was there. And what I did is, while this is all relevant, Arthur went above and beyond and actually did what has been built in the Isiqua Highlands. He actually went outside of the Highlands and said this is what's been built citywide. And not only did he do that, he went into each AMI and said, well, what has been built and at what rate? So this information, what I thought was invaluable. And I want to take a step forward, first of all, and see if any of you had questions on this, because I'm sort of going to build on it.
One second, Nick. Did anybody have questions?
Okay.
Thanks.
So I tried to make it even more simple, sorry, because this has been a very complicated process. Over the last 30 days, thanks to this information and really a teamwork of going back and rereading a development agreement after amendment and amendment, we went back and tried to reestablish what the project was in the Highlands 20 years ago. And the project was, and today still is, is 3,250 units. And so the numbers that have been going in front of you have been higher than 3,250. And I think that owes an explanation both from the city and from us. The way we get to 3,250, that was allowed as a development agreement 20 years ago. There were then in turn 700 converted units that Port Blakely was allowed to convert from commercial, which is in addition to the 3250. It just so happened by way of the Fourth Amendment in the DA that those weren't required to have affordable housing. Then later in a Seventh Amendment, there were 500 additional enhanced units through the WashDOT TDR process. And as part of that affordable housing requirement, that's how Parcel D was born, with 50 affordable housing units to suffice for those 500. So what we realized was through the audit was the original project still is intact at 3250. And through all eight amendments today and 20 years later, the 30% requirement in the original DA for the entire Highlands was applicable to the 3250. I'm going to stop there because I want to make sure there aren't any questions from that point. So if there aren't any, this brings us back to our 100 TDRs. And we've always said we wanted to work within the spirit of the DA. I think we can actually say we now know how to work within the DA framework, because honestly, we didn't know either. We didn't know how many affordable housing units were out there and what AMI they were actually built. So what I did here is just to give you a 3350, it's just simply 100 TDRs on top of the 3250 project. And I think the most important thing here is the 1,000 units represents what has been built in the Highlands. 975 was the requirement. If you add simply 100 units to the 3250, you would need to have 1,005 units to satisfy the DA today. So with that, I just wanted to set that benchmark just very clearly. That's what's required of us today. But I think it's fair to say we have a proposal in front of you, an AB, that has 39 affordable housing units, yet it has a city-owned property involved. And then you did get this last minute, I'll clarify, it is, I think Keith did a great job. We tried just to isolate and remove Parcel D as an alternative simply for you and the city council. There are changes to it because we only have so much room on our property. You can fit 100 TDRs, and we can barely fit 10 more affordable housing units on our property. It has to go through the rework. And we thought, well, what else can we do above the five units? Let's do 10. And then going back to Arthur's findings here, hopefully I can do this for you one more time. It became quite apparent to us, looking at this, that 60% AMI was a significant shortfall, not just in the Highlands, but citywide. I think that we looked at this as an opportunity, quite candidly, to bring more of that AMI to the Highlands and to the city. So that is the alternative before you. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. But we would love to seek a recommendation or decision this evening from you to move it to city council.
Nick?
Yeah.
Okay, open for questions. Hola.
So I'm sorry, it's, if you include Parcel D, so option, I'll just call it A, is you include Parcel D and you've got 39 units at 60% AMI?
So I'll revisit that, because you are, you're the new guy who hasn't been here for nine meetings.
Correct.
I know you're sharp. So the original proposal in front of you is the AB is to build, bring 100 TDRs to our property, build 39 affordable housing units on our property, and build 11 market rate on Parcel D.
Right. And 39 affordable, Adam, sorry, what AMI?
So we would match, the current development agreement has a 10-10-10 that Keith was alluding to, and it's 10%, you try to reach 10% at 80% AMI, 10% at 100% AMI, and 10% at 120% AMI.
Got it.
And then in there, if you want to get an extra layer, I know Arthur can speak probably better than I can, you've got two and three-bedroom counts and pricing specific to each of those.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Keith, you had mentioned, you had said that the no D and the 10 at 60% AMI, that was the third option? So is there another option that I'm missing?
I think the first option, yeah, the actual first option, the one with Parcel D is technically option two. The first option, they proposed building 30 units on Parcel D and none in Westridge, and that kind of fell pretty flat. So that one, it was option one, but it's been long since buried.
I see. So option three isn't really the third, isn't?
Technically, option two.
We have two options.
It's ratcheted up to two now.
Okay. So this, so really the conversation is hopefully a conversation about option two or option three?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, do you have questions?
Yeah, I do, thank you. Yes, I do. Nick might want to stay up there. So that's something new to consider.
Yes.
Wow, this keeps moving. The, so prior to this latest proposal, if I may summarize what we were looking at.
Yes.
Included Track D, it included 100 TDRs on the Westridge location plus 39 affordable units, that included the group home, plus 11 market rate on Track D.
Correct.
So 100 TDRs, 39 affordable, including the group home, plus 11 market rate on Track D.
Yep, so we had 38 multifamily affordable housing units and one Leo home that was actually a five-bedroom home.
Okay, so the 39 includes the group home.
We counted it as one for our tallying.
Okay, okay, I just, okay, I got that. And this is take Track D out, and it's 100 TDRs and 10 affordable?
Both onsite.
Did I just hear you say that, so, help me understand where 100 TDRs plus 39 affordable fits, then in this proposal only, you said something about fit. So 100 TDRs plus 10 affordable fits.
Correct.
And so I am interpreting that as space, buildable, doable.
Correct. The land that we own, you can only fit so much of the proposed townhome and single-family homes that we would build. And so you have to also work around storm vaults right away. You start chipping away landscaping parks, we simply don't have the space to add more.
Let me try. So the 39 was in a configuration that was stacked flats, so that it had a smaller footprint, right? Whereas the 10 are going to be townhouses, and they're going to be dispersed throughout. So there was, it was less space consumptive under the 39. Leo House takes up a big space, but the other 38 was actually a small footprint.
Thank you.
That's what I was trying to understand, yeah.
Any other questions, Paul? Come back.
Well, yeah, let's come back. I got a lot of questions.
So I want to ask Keith, so if option three, we reserve, we keep D, has the city done an estimate on if we were to try to do something with D and we were to try to do affordable housing, how much we would be able to fit there?
I would actually ask Arthur to answer that question if he wouldn't mind. He provided some information in the memo based on a similar project, a possible similar project.
So in the memo, that's on, Arthur Sullivan, Program Manager of Arch, in the memo, there was a little diagram of the site that sort of showed, given the neighboring uses. Oh, great, thank you. There you go. So because of what's, this is a conversation that was held in the last meeting, that when the city bought the land, there was nothing around it. And so it was like an acre, maybe you could get a higher number. But now that it's been developed and given the development, especially to the south, the odds are you would be looking at probably a townhouse, you know, small unit duplex-type building like you see here, that looks pretty similar to what Habitat has done. In other words, when you look at a building that scale, you're probably not going to look at a rental project with significant affordability because of how the financing world works. So your best chance for affordability would be either maybe something at 80% or so of median, where you donate the land and you might get close to that, or if you did something like with Habitat, where you are going to get the 50% or 60% of median income. But just as background, when you did the project in Isiqua Highlands, in addition to the land cost that Habitat needed to get to that affordability level, I believe we said in the memo, they needed an additional like 700,000 for a similar number of units. So to do this as a Habitat model would likely take some subsidy dollars to make happen as well. And you would probably land at about 60% of median income.
I'm sorry, it would be how many units?
Probably, it's looking like around 10, 12 units you would probably get on the site. And so if you donated that land, had a Habitat model, they would probably also still need some additional subsidies on top of that, probably about 70,000 a unit.
Cash?
Right. Yep.
70,000 a piece?
Probably about that.
For 14?
For 10 or 12 units would be like 700,000.
Well, it's got 14 units there.
Oh, is it 14? Yeah, so.
So about a million dollars.
Right.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Paul? Questions?
I think in this part, you know, one of the things we've done is, is we kind of jumped, picked apart out of the affordable housing memo, and we went right to kind of the table and the numbers.
Do you want to go through that memo?
Yeah, well.
Because we can put the memo up and have Keith walk us through and ask specific questions if you'd like.
Yeah, because I, so, yeah, I think that's important because.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Right.
So if we just scroll and start with item one, we'll see if there's any questions on that.
Absolutely. Item one of the first memo. Sorry for that. All right, so these were, so these were the questions that came up at the last committee meeting. And question number one was, did the model include the traffic from the 50 affordable housing units on the WashDOT development agreement on Parcel D? As we understand it, the difference between with project, without project, you know, but basically the question was, that came up after it was demonstrated that yes, Lakeside was accounted for in the model, was, was Parcel D's traffic accounted for in the model? So we provided a response, which is in red. Yes, the model includes WashDOT's entitlement. And then the clip below it is from the SEPA decision for WashDOT, which I think also addresses the question that yes, it was included.
Any more questions on traffic capacity?
Actually, thank you for that. I didn't realize that that language, you called it the clip below it, was from SEPA language from WashDOT.
You know, it'd be nice to.
Because I'm sitting there thinking, we're going to construct something at 15th Avenue and Park Drive? I'm sorry, there's already something there.
It would have been nice if I would have let you know that.
So you've answered the first question I had about that, that I found that a little bit confusing. Okay, so that was from the WashDOT.
Yes.
SEPA report. Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Move on, next one.
All right. Question number two, shouldn't traffic from the anticipated growth in the city of Sumamish have been included in the model? The answer that is that Sumamish will find alternative routes once the streets in Isiqua Highlands reach level of service F. How realistic is that, especially if no reasonable alternatives exist? So I got this response from Torsten. Torsten Linau is the city's concurrency expert with CH2M Hill. So his answer was, the short answer is yes, we included all of the planned and approved development in Sumamish in the Isiqua model last go-around, and will do so again, this time because we are updating the concurrency model this year.
Any questions on this one?
Yeah, I do.
Sorry, Paul?
I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So Keith, in your reply, the last paragraph.
Yes.
Says if the city causes a constriction point in traffic flow, could you talk about that, explain?
Yes.
Explain what?
So.
Because the previous paragraph basically says, you know, we have a tool, here's my, I'm paraphrasing, we have a tool, we can do something. We don't, we could do this, we could do that. We're not exactly sure what all the unintended consequences would be at this point, but we have this lever available to us.
Right.
And then you summarize it, you say, if the city causes a constriction point of flow in traffic. So that's, we did something, it created a constriction. And then you think, okay, that might cause people to divert elsewhere.
Yes.
So tell me about this constriction.
Okay, so if you, so Highlands Drive and 9th Avenue is a one-way couplet, and it comes together at the north end and the south end. And so there are traffic lights that have a certain amount of green time allocated in each direction right now to optimize flow through that intersection and overall level of service at that intersection. What the city can do because of the technology that we have is we can change the timing of the green flow to give more green time, for example. So if you take that, one of those northernmost traffic lights, so let's take High Street and 9th, which is if you're going, if you're coming southbound on Highlands Drive from Sumamish, there's actually now a new traffic light at the Highlands Terrace Apartment Complex. But then the first real traffic light you get to in the couplet is at High Street and 9th, right? And so right now, if the city reduced the amount of green time coming southbound in the AM peak, which would affect the Sumamish traffic, what would happen is traffic going in that direction would begin to back up to the point where people would potentially choose either Isiqua Falls City Road or Black Nugget or some other way off the southern portion of the plateau. In theory, I don't think it would affect 43rd because that's kind of the north end. So what this says is, yes, you can affect traffic movements, but at this point, nobody's really modeled that to see what kind of impacts might happen. Because you might, what you might end up happening is some other intersections could go to level of service, you know, E or F because of that change of flow. Don't know. Nobody's modeled that. But it is, it is a tool that we could use if we wanted to.
Okay, so you're talking about a constriction for the purpose of reducing the flow and to, for the net effect of hoping that certain pass-through traffic would take a different route.
Yes.
And so, and you just said, you know, Sumamish traffic, but I think you also said previous to that, that there is one existing development known as Isiqua Terrace, that they obviously would be impacted as well.
Yes.
Those heading south in the, any one of the peak, AM or PM, or I guess it would be AM.
In the AM.
Any more questions?
Please.
Paul, do you have more traffic questions?
No, I just want to make, no, I just, I don't have any more questions. I just think it's really important to understand that you're telling us that we have a tool to, that could, to reduce the flow, to encourage other traffic that would otherwise maybe drive through to take a different route.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next one, Keith?
Okay, next question. Is it possible for the intersection in Isiqua Highlands to continue to operate at level of service D and yet have driveways between intersections operate below level of service D? So the answer is yes. The city's concurrency model is based on overall operational intersection level of service D. Sorry, that was a lot of adjectives, but it's basically, so the intersection overall needs to operate at level of service D. In theory, you could have driveways in between that would operate at level of service E or F. Our model and our concurrency ordinance does not address private driveways.
Questions? Next.
Next question. What does the city's draft housing strategy say are the city's housing needs in each of the 80, 100, and 120% categories? And where is the city currently on meeting those needs, aspirational goals, both in the Highlands and citywide? So the answer was, the city's ongoing conversations about housing with the community and focus groups has indicated the city will not be able to accommodate housing demand facing the city at all income levels, including market housing for homeless, working-class, and low-income housing. The current conversations regarding housing needs has been approached as a citywide issue and is not focused. and is not focused on sub-area within the city such as Isaguac Highlands. See attached Affordable Housing memo.
Jump to the memo?
I can jump to the memo. And so the first part was about parcel D, and then citywide affordable housing starts on page five. And then there's some information provided, both citywide, so Highlands first under bullet two, and then citywide under bullet three. And you can see that quite a bit of our affordable housing is located in Isaguac Highlands right now, overall. When you look at 1,000 units versus 1,392 outside, so, and then there's the chart that we looked at earlier. So, and we can spend time in any of those places if you'd like.
You had another chart that had percentages as well, right? Each of those groupings?
Did we have a chart with percentages, Arthur? This one?
That's it, yeah, sorry.
This one?
Any questions on that answer or that chart?
If so, I'm going to defer to Arthur.
I don't, I don't have any questions, but thank you. I think this is what I was asking for. I, I don't think I was the only one to express an interest, but, but, you know, what did we, and the purpose was, we were looking at certain number of units at certain level of affordability. Okay, so what's in our portfolio today?
Right.
And what would this do?
Paul, do you have a question? Because we can do this as a discussion if you want.
So I just, thank you for putting this together. It did answer the question, at least that I was trying to do. Thank you.
Great.
Continue up on your memo would be great.
Okay, so the next question. Yeah, is it possible? Yeah. Okay, sorry. So where's the affordable housing currently located in the city? Is the city, is the city distributing the affordable housing fairly and evenly, or is it being concentrated in particular areas? And again, that was the memo. Is the current proposal consistent with the WashDOT agreement, which refers to up to 50 units of affordable housing on parcel D in some places, and at least 50 affordable units in others? Is the proposal consistent with what the city told the public and marketed the WashDOT agreement to the public as accomplishing? If not, why should the city now do something different? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, can you do the memo? Can, can you show me the, the chart again?
Yeah.
Because as an engineer, I'm pretty sure if I'm still confused, there are people in the audience who are still confused, so.
Not that way or this way?
I'd actually like to see it, as in like a normal.
Okay.
All right.
Questions?
So, so we can go through this, it might help to walk you through this chart.
At least one, one column.
Okay, so, so let's take the first row. So the first row is outside of Isaguac Highlands, okay? And then in each column, it's units at 30% area, area median income, area, units at 50% of AMI, 60, 80. And so that was an aggregate then of units at 80% or below, because that's kind of what we've been talking about as part of the Isaguac Highlands conversation. And then number of units at 100 and 120%. Does that make sense? So then, so with, with the Highlands then also, it was done for outs, for outs, for citywide. And then the Polygon proposal, just to show what those numbers would do if you added them onto the existing subtotals, basically, was the intent. And beyond that, I'm going to let Arthur talk because it's his chart.
Quick question. So on the bottom part where it says see citywide subtotals excluding Polygon proposals. So we now have a current housing stock of over 15,000 units. So the total percentage of affordable housing in the comp plan, the aspirational goal is 40%, but we're really at about, like, 10?
I'm going to say yes, I think so, but I would let Arthur.
What? Yes, I do, actually, Arthur. If you could come up and talk about that and address it. I think it should be really clear to the committee when you're done as to where we are overall.
Right.
With our inventory and towards our goal.
So you mentioned the aspirational goal, which is really based on what you can expect as a community-wide need. But that is for up to 80% of median income. So you're not at, you're at about 5% for up to 80% of median income. So that's split between, and the reason we use 30, 50, and 80 is because those are the three categories that are used under planning policies in the county and by all the cities. Within that distribution, the needs are at about 12% for households between 0 and 30% of median, and other 12% between 30 and 50, and just around 22% between 50 and 80. So that's what the needs are when we look at a cumulative community. And then this shows you where you're at. The reason we include the 100 and 120 is because in your master plan developments, the county was also looking for diversity beyond just the 80% level.
I'll ask you a question. So outside of the Highlands, there are no apartments at 100 to 120% of the amount?
No, these are only units that are explicitly designated through some type of agreement, funding, or land use. So you do have units that are at 100% and 120. These are ones that were explicitly created to be at that price point through government, some type of land use or funding requirement.
Protected, locked in versus?
Okay, well, that lessens the utility of this chart slightly, right? If you're talking about, I mean, it, I mean, I understand there's, there's not, the, the market isn't at the 30, 50, 60, and I assume 80%. You know, it's, it's not like this doesn't reflect, it's not like there's a whole bunch of 30 and 50% that just happens to be out there that isn't in this chart. But in the 100 to 120.
There is.
There is.
There is, and, and that was part of the work that's in the housing strategy. You will see a complete breakout that includes market rate housing as well. There's not a lot of ownership, and most of those units at 100 and 120 in Isaguac Highlands are ownership units. You don't see a lot in the 100% ownership that are affordable in the community. Probably you start to see some at 120. Most of what the market would be affordable at those levels would be rental housing. But that is data that the staff, me and other city staff have been collecting as part of that overall effort.
All right. Because I mean, trying to understand the value of this 10-10-10 policy with respect to the 39 units, it becomes a little bit harder if we don't really know what's out there.
So I have, I literally worked on the original agreement back in 90 whatever. And part of the intent of having the 100 and the 120 is keep in mind what this land would have been without a development agreement. It would have been single-family, large homes. And so this was a way to create as much diversity. So some of it was, you took a very bold strategy of taking your 80% goal and trying to make that more mixed, which it shows here, by bringing in like at the YWCA outside subsidies. And the 100 and 120, those are townhomes, those are condominiums, those are other types of housing that are being created that otherwise wouldn't have happened without the development agreement. So it was as much about sometimes increasing diversity of housing and having the market produce a wider range. So that was part of the intent, why they bother, you know, why are they doing that? It's because what it would have been otherwise were single-family, larger homes that would have all been well above 120.
Can you remind me, AMI for around here is what, 56 to 60, something like that?
It's now for a family of $4,96,000.
$4,96,000?
Correct.
All right.
Questions on the table? Otherwise, we'll go back to Keith and the memo. You're on.
I was just getting comfortable.
Nope. Just a reminder to the committee members, this first item, we scheduled for approximately an hour. We do have additional residents here this evening to talk about issues that are later on the agenda, and I do want to allow for some public comment on this item as well before we deliberate.
Okay, so next question is, please provide a link to the online version of the current entire WashDOT development agreement so that the committee members can read that agreement before the next committee meeting. That was done.
Questions on the WashDOT agreement or not?
Next question. Why was parcel D programmed for 50 affordable units when that number of units may not be feasible to develop on parcel D? So the response was 50 units could be accommodated on parcel D at 45 units per acre. This development would require all structured parking and likely a four-story building above the garage. Given the lower density of Forest Ridge, which is the neighborhood to the south, which was actually built after parcel D was entitled, 45 units per acre may no longer be a good fit for parcel D.
Questions on that?
You?
Yep, Paul?
Could you explain the, the last sentence? This is no longer the case. So at the time when the city approved WashDOT, 50 units were used optimized to attract outside funding. This is no longer the case. What does that mean?
And I'm, I'm, so this is my perspective. This is what I understood, and since I wrote the WashDOT agreement, so I may have been mistaken all along. But I'll let Arthur respond to that if he'd like to. So my understanding was, and that's why Lauren Heights is, which is up in the Highlands, is 50 units. It's why Rosecrest, which is over at Talis, is 51 units. So there's, there was, there was a scoring, like anything else, when you score for funding, either at the state level or at the federal level, there's always criteria, whether it's for roads or for affordable housing or whatnot. And so what I believed, which, again, I'm kind of saying may or may not be true, I'm looking to Arthur to let me know if I was mistaken, I believe that 50 units scored well in terms of getting funding from, whether it's HUD or one of the agencies that provided funding for those type of projects. Do you want to go?
He's looking at you like, kind of.
Well, yeah, so he's the expert, so, but that, but since I wrote it, so I can tell you why I wrote it. It may have been.
It's, it's, it was a sweet spot for a number of years. You used to get points for having 50 units or less, and you wanted to be right up at 50 because if you were smaller, it's harder to get investors because the projects are too small. So that is a little less so, but the issue of getting bigger projects is still out there. But before, the 50 cap was there to, to get some points. If you went above 50, you lost points.
Thank you.
So it's no longer a sweet spot? I'm just trying to understand.
Right. So that 50 threshold is not as significant anymore, but what you're seeing now is most projects are larger than 50 units because investors want to see bigger projects.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? We're going to move on.
So why is the administration recommending that parcel D be included in this deal? And so that's the first half of the second memo. And then the last question, what is the density on the parcel immediately to the west of the parcel on which the 39 units are proposed? And how does that neighborhood's density compare to the density of the parcel with the 39 units? So the, the subdivision or the development that's to the west of where Polygon showed the potential 39 units, that's called West Highlands Park. West Highlands Park is 190 units on 16.85 acres or 11.3 units per acre. If the 39 units of affordable housing are incorporated into West Ridge, the density of West Ridge north of Discovery Drive would be 321 units on 26.7 acres, which is 12 units per acre.
Are there questions on that one? Paul?
Are we going to go to talk to the parcel D?
Now we're on the parcel D memo.
All right.
So, so you want me to go through this? Or do you want to just ask questions?
If you have specific questions, you can go right ahead with your questions.
Yeah, so in your list of benefits, it's, the number one says, the proposal from Polygon Northwest would create nine affordable units from this transaction. Earlier this evening, we were talking about this. With track D, there's 39 affordable units.
Right. So when we, when, when I wrote this first bullet, at the time, we had basically said there's, and this was back to when Polygon was saying, okay, if, if track D's part of this deal, there's 30 units, and then the additional nine were what we were evaluating to see, because it's 39. The additional nine is what we were evaluating to see if there was adequate benefit to put parcel D on the table. Today, given the now option three that was brought forward, it seems like these numbers dramatically changed because we're not talking about nine units, we're talking about a different number, right? We're talking about 29 units. Because the delta between options two and three, if you're just talking quantity of affordable housing, it's either 10 or it's 39.
Right, okay, so this number one really is create an additional nine affordable units. It's on top of the 30.
Yes.
Because track D, it went, if track D is in the transaction. So this is an additional, additional nine.
Well, so it's an additional, so the delta's now 29, right? It's the difference between 10 and 39.
Okay. Yeah, so, so, yeah, so, you know, I got my question before I saw this proposal in writing.
Yeah, it's changed. This has changed based on the new proposal three.
Okay, so the nine came from, is how we did the, kind of the, the value comparison of the, what we estimated to be the value of the land versus the public value of the affordable units.
Yes.
The additional affordable units, the additional nine, okay. That was the only question I had from the.
Okay, on the entire memo or on that page of the memo?
That's, I've, I'm good on the whole, entire memo.
Are there any other questions for Keith? Arthur? Then at this point in time, what I'd like to do is take some public comment during committee meetings, which are business meetings. It's not a public hearing. You do not have to, you do have to go to the microphone just so you can be heard, but you do not have to state your name and address. And it's not a question and answer period, it's a comment period. So if there's anybody who'd like to speak about this item, which is Ninth Major Amendment to the Isaguac Highlands Two-Party Development Agreement and the First Amendment to the WashDOT Development Agreement, raise your hand, come on up to the microphone. None? Oh, wrong. Mary? Go ahead, Mary. No worries.
One of the concerns I have about the traffic and the traffic studies that I've seen done in Isaguac is they don't consider buses, school buses or transit buses in the traffic flow studies. And since we've got a major park and ride, which we should hopefully be using more, getting more buses from Semamish going through that way and down, as well as we've got more school buses. School buses actually stop along 9th and the high streets, so that's going to affect traffic once these developments get built out. The roads are going to be too narrow for the buses, the school buses to get down there. The other thing we also have considerable trouble with is the Microsoft buses that are parking up there and blocking streets. So currently, there is already a bottleneck because of traffic up there because of bus stops. And so there's going to be more bus stops added up. So my concern is the traffic studies are not really accurate and show true for what's today, and definitely don't show what's going to happen tomorrow when you look at Lakeside and the other developments that are going to build, be built out there, and that are going to have bus stops right along the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Okay, so deliberations. I was going to run an idea by you because it's a little more complicated tonight. I appreciate that Polygon also brought some additional information, but I would propose that we talk first about the proposal that includes track D and look at whether, talk about whether or not we agree that the infrastructure impacts have been mitigated, that the 10-10-10 proposal for affordable housing is okay, that track D should be included, and see where we land with that before we talk about the new proposal. Does that make sense? So first question would be, infrastructure impacts. Are committee members comfortable that, with all the new traffic information, utility information that we got, that this proposal works?
Traffic. Have comments?
I will at some point. What are you guys thinking?
Yes.
Yes. There you go, that was simple. Paul?
Yeah, I agree.
Amen?
I agree with Paula that, that the, all our questions have been answered, you know, in terms of volumes today, volumes, what we know and think is going to happen tomorrow. And I understand that there will be some impacts, but with, with, with pretty minor mitigations, then we can, we model to show that. in terms of volumes today, volumes, what we know and think is going to happen tomorrow. And I understand that there will be some impacts, but with, with, with pretty minor mitigations, then we can, we model to show that the intersections will perform at our level of standard.
I'm also fine with the infrastructure and utility impacts. I believe as the area urbanizes, it will get more congested, that's an expectation. So I appreciate staff and Polygon bringing back so much additional information. The number of units in the original proposal, or in, I guess we're calling it Proposal B, was 100 units with TDR plus 39 units affordable, plus 11 housing units. The breakdown of those units that were affordable were 10, 10, and 10. How does that sit with everybody? Similar to the Isaguas Highlands Original Agreement, 60, or sorry, the 80, 100, 120, I think, 80, 100, 120?
I just want to clarify one thing that you said. The, the Proposal B, number two, is 100 TDRs and 39 affordable housing units.
No 11 market rate houses on Track D.
We already have those. We own those.
So just...
I just want to make sure the, the total number is correct.
There's a slide. Remember? At one point or another.
Okay, 265, 139, and 404. Got it. So 404 units, that would be the proposed change to the development agreement to add capacity for, no, sorry, 139 units is the proposed change under the development agreement. And of the affordable, it's 10, 10, and 10.
So I'll speak to that. You know, I have for a long time said that I thought that we didn't have enough at the 80, 80 and 100, I'm not, I'm not sure about 120. But I didn't hear Arthur complaining about this, and I know he wants us to see more at the 30 and the 50. I get that. But basically, if he's okay, I think this really addresses a need that I've been seeing for quite some time, so I'm, I'm actually very comfortable with that. I think that's a step in the right direction.
Paul?
Yeah, it would be, the additional information is helpful. The understanding, you know, what we have at different affordability levels, and it would, and it would be great to have seen in this proposal, units at other affordability levels. Nevertheless, there, we have the need at the levels that are proposed, there's no, there's no doubt about that. And, and there's another element of this as well in that beyond the land on Track D, there's no other public investment. And, and so bringing those to market would be, I mean, this is the fastest way also to bring them to market. And so, yeah, I think at a certain level, I'd like to see numbers at other affordable levels, however, still meeting the need, and I think we're, the simplicity with which we're going to have some value as well, and the time that they get to market has value as well.
I want to add one more thing.
You can talk twice before I'm talking.
I'm sorry. I can wait.
Tola, go ahead. I can't, I'm too...
I just want to add one thing on the, how I know that we don't have enough workforce housing. One of our uniformed police officers lives in the city of Isaguas. All the rest live elsewhere because it's too expensive to live here. And I have said for eight years, we need to be a city where our cops can live here, where our teachers can live here, and where our firefighters can live here, just to pick three examples. We're not yet. So we need more in that direction, and so that's why I like this.
Wait. I am not on the same page with both of you, I think. Just looking at the comp plan and reading the language, couple of policies. H-Policy D2, "Consider requiring affordable housing when evaluating rezones and other changes to land use or development regulations that increase development capacity." This is a request to increase capacity under an existing agreement that we have. That existing agreement said include it. Include it at 10-10-10. In my mind, 100 new should be 30% of those units should be affordable. That's the contract we have in place, why would we expect anything less now? So I'm not comfortable saying we get it if it's in addition. If you, if you upzone even more, you can have it. I don't agree with that. We have a contract in place. It says, of the housing capacity you have, 30% will be. And so for me, I do not think we need to say you can even upzone higher for us to get it. Our comp plan says we're going to require it whenever this comes up. So I'm, I'm not with you guys. I don't think 139 is the right number. I think it's 100, and 30 of them fall into those ranges. The other piece that I'm a little concerned about in this proposal is we have another policy that talks about affordable housing shall be dispersed with other residential and mixed uses to blend in. I don't like seeing a part of the campus carved out. I don't think that's the intent of our comp plan. I don't think that is how, if I was a citizen reading this and say, "How do I want my city to build out?" I don't think we're following that either. So for me, it should be, if we're going to go recommend a modification, it would be to add 100 units, allow it to be done with the TDRs, which they have the certificate for, 30% of them are affordable according to the rules that we have in our original agreement, which is 10-10-10, and that they're dispersed, that they're not included in separate buildings, that they're not called out. Those three blocks over there are affordable, these six blocks are market rate. So I feel like we're drifting away from what, not only what we have in our comprehensive plan, but from what our citizens think we're going to do. So I'm not in support of this proposal. The, the last question on this one, and maybe it just morphs us into the next piece, is yes or no to Track D. This includes the city providing this parcel as part of this project. So I'm assuming that if you're in support of the number of units, that 139, if you're in support of the allocation of affordable, you are in support of Track D being used for affordable housing. Hello?
Yes, I, well, I'm, I'm for the option that includes us including Track D.
Yes.
Because 39 is larger than 10 plus 14. And I'll, I'll also, also, since I'm doing math, since you're an iron engineer, 39 out of 139 is 28%. It's, it's almost 30%. It's not 30 out of 100. I understand why philosophically you think it should be 30 out of 100, not 39 on top of 100, but when you look at the net sum, that, that addition, it's awful close to 30%. But...
Paul?
I have a question. Does, has it been said whether or not the option without Track D includes the multifamily unit, the Leo House? Is that, is it in the 10?
It would not be. Think of space allocation, it's, it's really, because the group home takes up such a big footprint, I think it's, they're back to the space issue of, like, so much land, I think that they're willing to give up within West Ridge for affordable housing.
Your thoughts on Track D, Paul?
I agree with Tola that the higher number, you know, 39, and now it's very clear with the, with the group home, has in total greater public benefit. So, I, I, the, the alternative of not including it to be 10 interspersed, all at 60, is, is attractive as well. But, you know, both of them, if they were, if they came to us in isolation, one or the other, I think they both have merits. But I think given the, the numbers that we have, and including getting the group home, I think it's a tough choice, but I do, I, I think that to include Track D has merit, and that's what I would support.
So I am going to then be the minority opinion, and I'll, I'll state where I think we should go after. Is there any point in discussing the alternative proposal C that was brought to us tonight? It sounds like you both see more merits in Proposal B than Proposal C.
Well, that's what I was just commenting on.
Okay. So then we'll move it on to the council on the regular business, two to one in favor of approving the modification. And as part of the summary that goes into the agenda bill on the update, I'd like to show that the minority opinion is that we should be sticking with the original Isaguas Highlands Agreement of including, not adding to numbers, so that affordable housing is included in the entitlement, and at the rates that are, are currently specified in the Isaguas Highlands Development Agreement. And that Track D should remain a city parcel, and that the city should review proposals to find, to develop it for affordable housing or other use. That's it. Thanks. Next item this evening, Item C, AB 7110, Windward-Bergsma Development Agreement, and Christopher Wright will be our staff tonight presenting the project. Thanks, Christopher.
Thank you. Hello again, everyone. Let me just find my folder. Okay, as you mentioned, what I am presenting to you this evening is the development agreement proposal for a clustered subdivision from Windward-Bergsma, and we last discussed this at the May 4th Land and Shore Meeting, and prior to that, it went through a public hearing with the city's development commission. This vicinity map shows where the project is located, and it's immediately southwest of Newport Way and west of SR 900 and north of Talis. This is a section out of the Isaguas Municipal Code that talks about the purpose of allowing clustered housing, and there's basically four, four elements to that. And the first is to achieve the maximum allowable density on the developable area of a proposal while preserving critical areas. The second one is to provide more common usable open space and native forested open space than would be allowed in a traditional plat. The third is encourage affordable housing through the provisions of smaller lots, against lots that were smaller than what the zoning allows outright. And then fourth is to provide more efficient arrangement of structures and infrastructure. This particular proposal in this development agreement is for a maximum equivalent of 78 single-family homes on a little over 45 and a half acres. The plat also includes, in addition to the 74 detached single-family homes, it includes four duplex cottages, which would be designated as affordable housing. And then in addition to the residences, of course, the, the subdivision would include new roads, frontage improvements, neighborhood parks, and, as I mentioned, open space. So a little over half of the parcel, parcels, 25 and a half acres are environmentally critical areas, that would be steep slopes, wetlands, streams, and their buffers. And about 20 acres of the site is what we call developable, outside of those critical areas. And the site would be accessed via a new, new street off of Newport Way Northwest, and also included in the development agreement proposal is a secondary access road through Harvey Manning Park from Talis. This is the conceptual site plan that is shown as part of the development agreement. And as I mentioned, here's the new road from Newport Way. And basically, what you see in red are, again, this is conceptual, but these are basically how the lots would be laid out, how the houses would be laid out. And you can see, again, here's that connection I mentioned into Talis. And basically, what, in particular, what I want to point out, and all the rest of the gray area would be set aside as permanent open space. So in addition to the area along Newport Way, what I wanted to point out is the area, the whole western portion of the site would also be set aside, and likely would be dedicated to either King County to become part of Cougar Mountain Park, or possibly the city as well, but more likely King County. And I did want to say, we, of course, have received more public comments since our last meeting, and so I wanted to give those to you. There's several more public comment emails that we've received, and these, of course, will be added to the agenda bill packet, but I wanted to make sure I gave them to you.
Christopher, there were some, some correspondence today was directed right to council members. Did you see any of that?
I did see those, and I, I think you might find them in here. I think there were a couple that just were procedural in, in nature, and I don't know if they necessarily had to become part of the record, but the ones that were making comments about the application, I think they're, like I said, there's a lot of emails flying around. If I missed one, certainly let me know, but I think they're probably in there. And also included in your packet for tonight's meeting was a briefing response memo where I did my best to try to answer or address the questions that came up at the last Land and Shore Meeting, both questions that you mentioned verbally, but also through emails. And as you saw, there was a memo that, that listed those questions as best as I could summarize them and responded to them. And I'm not necessarily planning on going through each of those tonight, but just know that if you want more information, if you want us to go a little deeper on any of those, we can, we can certainly do that. And as this discussion has evolved, kind of the direction it's gone basically is comparing what can be done through the clustered plat, through the development agreement, comparing that to what can be done without a development agreement and just through a traditional plat. And when I say traditional plat, that means that it would not require a development agreement, it would not require city council approval, but it would require going through a public hearing process with the city's hearing examiner. And, and the clustered plat with the development agreement also will be going through the, the public hearing process with the hearing examiner. But the difference, again, is whether there's a development agreement or not, and whether the city council approves it or not. So again, in the, in, as far as making the comparison between what's allowed through the development agreement and not through development agreement, I think this was, this was introduced, or it might have been an earlier version, but this was basically introduced at the last Land and Shore Meeting, showing what can be done without a development agreement. And it shows, you know, again, the, the developable, the area that would be impacted is basically the same, it's just showing larger lots, which would have larger houses, of course. But the biggest difference as far as impacted area is this area that is also developable that would include new residential lots, because the, one of the things that you get with clustering is setting aside additional usable, developable area to be preserved as open space. And so, again, with a clustered plat, this would be open space, but with a traditional plat, they would propose to develop additional lots there. One thing the applicant prepared for us, again, comparing a clustered plat to a regular plat, is this chart. And I'll start with the, the biggest difference, obviously, is through the clustered proposal, there would be 78 residential lots, and then in the regular, traditional plat, there would be 40. And again, that's based on the density that's allowed and the lot sizes and, and the other differences include with, with the regular plat, there would be 7% more of the site that would be impacted by the development. With regard to critical areas, like you saw, it was about the same. For the tree canopy, there's an additional two or so acres that would be impacted through the regular plat, or 13% of the site. The grading, grading volume is similar, but again, because of that extra area that would be developed, the difference is about 14% more as far as grading volume. With the... With the traditional plat, there would not be any affordable housing units, whereas, again, as I mentioned, within the cluster development, there would be eight. And then for the connection to Talis, whether it's an emergency access or otherwise, through the cluster development, the applicant would be building that, again, all the way through Harvey Manning Park and to Talis, whereas in the traditional plat, they would just be going up to the edge of their property and not all the way. And then another significant difference is the improvements that would be done to Newport Way. Through the cluster development, the applicant, would be requiring the applicant to do full frontage improvements, both sides of Newport Way, the whole length of their frontage, whereas with a traditional plat, all that we can require is half-street improvements for that length of Newport. So this is the recommendation that was taken out of the original agenda bill, and what the recommendation was that we go to the May 4th and June 1st Land and Shore meetings, which we have. And then we are also asking that tonight you make a recommendation to return this development agreement proposal back to the full council on June 19th. And as we listed in the agenda bill originally, there are, of course, alternatives. We recommend that you do approve the proposed resolution with additional or revised conditions. Another alternative, of course, is to not approve the resolution and not recommend approval of the development agreement. But as I mentioned, the likely impact of that would be that the applicant would come in with that traditional plat. And then third, of course, you can remand it back to the development commission for more review, or you could ask that we come back to Land and Shore again. But I do hope that by the end of this evening, you will be comfortable making a recommendation to the full council.
There were a lot of attachments on this part of the agenda. I actually would like Christopher to run through some of these, especially the questions. So not sure how the other council members feel, similar to what we just did with the last memo.
Can I say a question before you go back though?
Sure.
And maybe it's in the attachments. Can you talk about, so there's open space. What's that, what's that going to be? And there's aspirational language in some of the drawings, but as an engineer, you sort of ignore aspirational language, and you say, what's the actual requirement on this thing, not what it might possibly be?
Well, essentially, there's two kinds of open space. One is critical area and buffer, which is typically, you know, native growth, protection, easement, has to be just maintained pristine and natural. And then there's usable open space, and that's the difference between a cluster and a non-cluster is with a cluster, there's 15% of the site requirement, that 15% of the site that is developable, that could otherwise be built on, that is not critical areas and not buffers, that that additional area be set aside as open space. So even though it's buildable, and it's outside of critical areas and buffers, it becomes open space. So those are the two different types.
What does that mean practically for the people who live there, for the neighbors? Is there trails that are going to go through, that would go through in that option, that wouldn't go through in the other option?
Yeah, every site is different, obviously, but in this particular case, I think you can see in the clustered proposal, and we did get an exhibit also that I handed out tonight from Mr. Kapler that shows potential areas for existing trails and new trails, but it's kind of reflected here, these trails that go into, again, this is the difference between the two, that this is, you know, not sloped, it's usable, it's relatively flat, more so than the rest of the site. And so it kind of shows where there's trails through there, whereas, again, with a traditional plat, it would be developed on. And then, you know, there still would be trails on this site, there still would be preserved open space.
Who pays for and maintains those trails? How do we know that if we move forward, that they exist five years from now and that they're good?
The native growth protection easements, and through here too, we've debated this in the council, whether it should be dedicated to the city and/or maintained by the homeowners' association. Again, I think in this case, because it's such a critical connection to the rest of Cougar Mountain, it would become part of the Cougar Mountain Park. But this area, we could decide whether that's dedicated to the city or preserved by the homeowners' association.
So the upper one, if it becomes part of Cougar Mountain Park, who pays for it and maintains it?
So the county would have to accept that dedication. It doesn't come automatically. And if they accepted that dedication, then they would ultimately maintain the viability of those trails.
And they've indicated that they are interested. There is an email that's in your, what I handed out tonight, from King County, that says they'd be interested in it.
And last question on trails, and then we can move on. Is there a trail that ends in somebody's backyard? Is that what I see there? Because that doesn't seem like...
This one?
Yeah.
That will be one of the less expensive houses. Yeah, and that's why this is a conceptual site plan versus the final site plan.
Yeah, don't have a trail in it.
Christopher, if you want to go to the staff memo, that'd be great.
Okay. Do you want me to start going through these?
Yeah, what we'll do is, if we have a question, we'll stop on one and ask the question.
Okay. So, and they're broken into kind of categories, so maybe I'll just kind of touch on each of those. The first category is, again, the comparison between the standard and the non-clustered plat. And you're just basically asking what the differences were, and I think I went through most of those, including what the difference is in the tree canopy. And there was a more detailed exhibit about that as well. That was one of the attachments. Maintaining the forested character, how does the clustered layout compare to, again, the more traditional plat? And they're requesting the building height's up to 45 feet above the center line, because they are asking for the deviation to how we calculate the height. And mostly what it comes down to, again, is that area of the site that would be preserved through the cluster, that would not be preserved through the traditional plat. And again, that's two acres. And the intent of the cluster provision, again, is to preserve more of the wooded hillside, more of the open space, and that is what's being proposed.
How much more of the open space and the wooded being preserved?
So it's 15% of the site, and as we say here, it's about two acres.
What's the, what is the percentage increase in tree retention and open space from one proposal to the other? 15?
You had that in the previous document you were showing us.
I think so.
You had that table of summary of differences. It was in there.
Yeah.
So if you click on the last tab up top, Christopher, because you just opened it.
This one?
Well, that's the one that just opened.
Okay. So this shows, and maybe the applicant will be able to go through this in more detail than I can, because he prepared this chart.
I guess what I'm looking at is the total usable open space outside of critical areas, and it says it's 10.23% of the site for the clustered plat and 2.72. Doesn't the cluster provision say that the net open space has to be 15%? Exclusive of...
It's a bit more than that, because in the second column, it talks about the net site area calculated per your code.
Right here?
Yes.
Christopher, could you explain that so that everybody...
I might have to have Greg come up to explain. Greg Krabi, the applicant, is on his way up.
Thank you.
Like I said, in addressing the questions, it was kind of a combination of asking the applicant to prepare some responses and myself, and kind of took all of us.
This is a pretty complicated one. There's a simpler one. Would you prefer that we went to that, or you want to work with this one?
Well, let's go through this one, Greg. It's in the packet.
Okay. So, starting here, this is the total site area. Here is the total area that's not in critical areas. These are the two proposed development areas here. This is the net site area as calculated per your code, which allows us to subtract out critical areas and roads and things like that. And that's what you use to calculate the required, the open space requirements for the percentages. So here's, so for the net site area, the percent of the total site area is reflected here. Total open space outside of the development is reflected here. This is the percentage of the total site area here. This is the total usable open space outside of critical areas. So in the cluster development, it's 4.67 acres, and in the traditional plat, it's 1.24 acres. And that's reflected in that part that's developed in the northeast corner of the property. I don't know if I can bring up the map here.
Keith, is there a definition of what usable open space is in the code?
I believe so. Christopher?
Because a forest is considered usable open space.
Usable open space, is that a defined term in 1802?
It is.
Yeah, I don't have access definitions, but 1802?
So, the big change in usable open space, the way I've defined it in this table, is that this area isn't being developed. And so this is an area that's not in steep slopes and not in critical areas. Now, it's not landscaped. We have landscaped, level critical, or level open spaces within the plat that also meet the requirement. Okay, so how do I go back to where you were?
Any more questions on the table?
I'll go back to the table, I think I can. There we go.
And Christopher, at some point, it'd be nice to know what that definition of usable open space means.
So continuing on here, we can see in this total usable open space outside of critical areas, it constitutes, this is the percentage that it constitutes of the total site, and this is the percentage that it constitutes of the net site area per your definition over here. And then the landscaped open space is here, and we have almost an acre in the cluster development, and none is required in the traditional development.
Thank you. Any more questions on the table? Hey, moving on, Christopher.
Where did that go now? Okay, and then similarly, the question about less disturbance of land, again, I think we kind of talked about the differences between the two as far as...
Actually, sorry, Christopher, I had one more question. So the Viewshed Analysis Exhibit 12, does it show you what it is if it's just traditional?
No, I don't think that was updated.
What, for a traditional subdivision, what would be the height, reef height?
It would be 30 feet from the midpoint of the grade to the midpoint of the highest gable.
All right, go ahead.
Variances, the question was, what were the variances for? And there were three parts to it, and I've listed those here. And the hearing examiner's decision, of course, is included in your packet. Are there filling of wetlands? This explains what's happening there. There are wetlands that, if they're smaller than 2,500 square feet, they're basically exempt and can be filled, and that's what's happening here. The hearing examiner states, "Alternative development concepts have been evaluated, and undue hardship would result." And since the access to the site must be from Newport Way, and the critically steep slopes are right there at Newport Way, there really are no alternatives other than accessing from Newport Way, requiring the variances to be done. And with the storm, one of the, part of the variances was that the storm vault was going to be in a steep slope area, and that does need to be, you know, again, whether it's a traditional subdivision or the clustered plat, it does need to be at the bottom of the hill. And so the size may vary some, but the location would still be where it is. We've talked a bit last, at the last meeting, about the street deviations, and again, we've included a table that summarizes those. There are no grades within the plat that would exceed 12% slope, that's talking about the roads. Development standards, this is another section, we were asking about the reduced setbacks, and those are on the lots that are essentially around the city-owned property. These here. And, and again, this is more for consistency between the lots and the plat.
Christopher, a question on that. Under the cluster housing standards, where it talks about setbacks at exterior boundaries...
Yeah.
It says if the zoning is different, it shall be the greater of the setbacks required by the site zoning or setback required. How can you adjust that, if that's what the code says? How can you say it can be less?
All setbacks can be adjusted, you know, either through an administrative adjustment of standards, or, again, that's a deviation that they're asking for in the development agreement.
So why would you do that if you're already going to smaller lots and smaller yards? Why would you go with a variance or deviation to allow to even reduce that further?
This was the applicant's explanation here.
So why would you support that, though? Why is that better? Why does that produce a better outcome? Because they could ask to have no lot lines.
Right, right. And again, through a clustered plat, you could. I think in this case, so basically, there's this split zoning. This side is single-family suburban, and this side is single-family estates. The required setbacks for both of those zones are really different. And the single-family estate zone in particular, there's, you know, 30-foot setbacks that are required. And again, to have, you know, a consistent plat with similar houses and lot sizes, again, we look at what the impacts are to the adjacent properties also when we're reducing setbacks. And since we're reducing setbacks adjacent to the city parcel, it is not going to be developed at any time, we didn't see that there was any negative impact.
What's the benefit? I'm trying to understand why we would want them to build houses on small lots with even smaller backyards. Why would we want to do that?
Well, again, it's a...
You know what? I'll just let you think about it, and we'll come back to it after. Just keep moving on through your questions, or through the questions on that.
Okay. Is this the definition of common usable open space? Okay. Again, this is out of the Issaquah Municipal Code. Includes those areas not on individually owned lots that are accessible for a variety of recreational uses, including but not limited to trails, picnic areas, and other recreation. Thank you, Keith.
Questions on that? Next one.
Okay. So the lot sizes, again, if it's in the single-family estate zone, the minimum lot size is 35,000 square feet. If it's in the SFS zone, single-family suburban, it's 9,600 square feet. What is being proposed in the clustered plat... square feet. What is being proposed in the clustered plat are about 3,000 square-foot lots.
Um, hang on a second, Christopher. Can we go back to that one for a second? One question up, actually, sorry.
Mary Lou, can I ask you a question?
Sure. I just wanted to go one question. Go ahead.
So what, how, on these sorts of, uh, uh, these, what kind of setbacks do you have between buildings, if any? How do you, do, with this kind of zoning, do you also, in addition to saying how many square feet the building can be and how many square feet the lot is, I assume there is separation between buildings? And if so, how does the code read on that?
For cluster developments, there are no interior setback requirements at all. You know, like we talked about, their setbacks are measured around the exterior of the whole site, rather than on the individual lot. So there is no setback requirement for clustered. You get into building code requirements, you know, the, the building separations, fire code separations, but you can do zero lot line in a clustered plat if that's what's proposed.
So for freestanding homes, Keith, what does that, what does that mean? What's the minimum separation we might see on these, as freestanding homes?
Typically, six feet is, that's eve to eve, is what builders have done to keep from having to do like a two-hour firewall on the side because of the construction costs associated with that. So side yards could be as small as three feet on each property. And the arriving Californians will buy these houses.
All right, okay. Good to know.
Okay, one of the other questions that you brought up last time, you wanted to see some comparisons of what this neighborhood may look like compared to Talis. And so, the applicant did provide some pictures of what he thought were kind of the most similar to what would be proposed on Burgsma.
You know what the roof heights are on these? The midpoint of the roof, are they 45 feet on the center line of the road?
I know that's what's allowed in Talis.
What are we looking at?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
30 feet, then? So these, how, the ones we're talking about here would be potentially from center line of the road, 15 feet taller than this?
Right.
So there is no adjustment of height for these ones?
There, there is. Yeah, I've got it here. So here's what's allowed in Talis, the 45 feet, and then here's what's being proposed for Burgsma, which is 35 feet. And then, as, as we talked about, what, within a traditional plat and elsewhere in the city, it's 30 feet.
So why, why is it better to go taller? Why is it a good idea to go taller? Why approve that variance? Why not just stick with the standard building height? What is the benefit to going taller?
Again, by, by doing the, the development agreement, there, there's negotiations, and we get some things, and it's a, it is a give and take. And then they have the ability to ask for deviations through the code through the development agreement, and that's one of the things that they've asked for. You know, similar, similar to Talis.
To create a larger home, basically.
Potentially. So is a privately maintained access road considered? And no, it wasn't. Traffic counts.
A question on that one. What does a full traffic count mean? That it was done over a period of time more than just the one day?
Okay.
Hi, I'm Brad Lincoln with Gibson Traffic Consultants. Full traffic counts in, in this respect, where we did AM and PM peak hour traffic counts, and those were done during, so in the AM, it's 7 to 9 AM, and in the PM, it's 4 to 6 PM. And we did counts both in August and then in December, because Faishafi required that we do them while school is in session, to answer the question of, is school traffic going to cause a higher traffic count? And in one hour, it was slightly higher, and in one hour, it was slightly lower. Regardless, we used the higher of the August or December counts in our analysis.
Questions on that?
Okay, this question was about the improvements to Newport Way, and we've provided the cross-section for what would be happening along that frontage. Again, the, I'd mentioned the difference between the traditional and the, and the clustered plat. It's with the clustered plat, they will be doing the full improvements all the way on both sides of Newport Way, whereas the traditional plat would just be doing on their side of the road. Is there a crosswalk or pedestrian connection required? No, none is proposed at this time.
So how are we providing safe access from that neighborhood to save the transit center?
Well, again, on this frontage, there would be the sidewalk, and then the gap is where the landscape business is, and we'd be working with the applicant, or that landscape frontage to hopefully put in at least a temporary sidewalk until the time that the city can go in and fill in the gaps on Newport Way.
Question on that? Next?
Actually, I do, I do. A question about that. So that's the first I've heard of that. So, so that the city is, is that a commitment? Is that aspirational, that, that a sidewalk, temporary, to connect from the edge of this property to whatever sidewalk improvement exists or needs to be built at the intersection of 900 and Newport? So, so that's the first I've heard of this. It's been one of the issues that's been raised a couple of times. I want to really get a good understanding of what, what we think, what would be the outcome.
Okay, and my name is Doug Schlep with DSD. The discussions that we've had with the developer up to this point is not a temporary sidewalk, but to improve the existing shoulder to provide pedestrian access along the shoulder of the road to the intersection at SR 900 and Newport Way. And that would be from the end of their frontage improvements, where the permanent sidewalk would be constructed, to the intersection.
What's a shoulder improvement?
It would be gravel shoulder along the edge of the bike trail, or bike lane.
Any more questions on that? Thanks, Doug. Let's continue. Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. Again, you asked why there was that 50-year limit, and again, this response I got from Mr. Sullivan. Emergency access, you, because I provided that one map that showed response times, and so I did check with the, the fire chief, and they did not take James Bush Road into account when they made that. Comprehensive plan policies, one of the things that you had asked was, you asked about specific comp plan policies and how this proposal was meeting them or not meeting them. And so I provided some of those answers here, but I also referred you to the, to the SEPA mitigated determination of nonsignificance, which also had a, had a couple pages listed of the applicable comp plan policies as well. So, I would encourage you to go through those.
If you go back, Christopher, into the comp plan H policy A2, so the smaller single-family homes on smaller lots. So, to me, that reads sort of generally that with the clustered agreement, what we're getting is smaller homes on smaller lots. So, what we're getting is 70-plus large homes on small lots and eight cottages.
Right, and I think what we need to do, again, is go back and compare what could be built with the traditional plat versus what would be built with a clustered plat.
We can talk about, we can, we'll talk about that as well. I'm not sure that's what this is saying. I'm not sure it's saying smaller than a mansion. I think it's saying smaller, single-family homes, not smaller than a mansion. So, okay. Talk about that.
Again, except with regard to the location of the housing in relation to the, the critical areas, and they're meeting all of the required buffers and setbacks, except for the pieces where they got variances for.
A question about the clustered housing provision, then. In the other clustered home subdivisions that we've approved previously, did they require variances to encroach or reduce buffers?
We'll, we'll see those. Yeah, they're, they're later in here. Protection of steep slopes, again, if you're comparing the two, they happen in both proposals. Again, with the exception of the, what was approved for the variances. We talked about what would be proposed, the connection to the SR 900. We talked about the potential of transferring at least that western portion to King County. This is, I think, what, and I think this has even been updated. I think what we talked about earlier, it may be a little different than what's here, but what we shared earlier is, is updated compared to this.
Okay, so that's why the number looks different.
Right, right. And I, I wanted to mention that, to go by the attachment rather than what's embedded here. One of the primary goals of clustering is preserve critical areas. Again, the critical areas are preserved in both, but the difference between the two is whether you can achieve the maximum allowable density through clustering, which you can't necessarily do through a traditional plat. But in both cases, the critical areas are preserved. The applicant is proposing off-site mitigation, but the details of that haven't been worked out, and it would be worked out with the preliminary plat.
Christopher, I did have a question on this one. I see the SEPA conditions, which sound like they're new from the Talis Parcel 9 slide. But what about, does the proposed development build on any of the areas that were identified as Alderwood or Everwood formations? The ones that had the more hazardous language described?
Are you prepared to answer that?
We'll move on. We'll just get the answer at some point. We can move on.
I do have a map that, that I can show that, and the soils are a little bit different than what was listed in the old SEPA.
So, I think I'd still like to know if we're building on those areas.
Okay.
Let's move on to the next question.
The next section is about the SEPA MDNS. You had specific questions about those, some of those statements that were made. And you had specific questions about the, the truck traffic and the number of trips, and how that was addressed in the SEPA as well.
I guess, Christopher, a question under the regular subdivision provisions. What are the limitations on clearing and grading? Why is it that there would be more landform changing to do with single-family homes than to clustered homes?
In this case, the increase is because of that additional area that would be developed. That's the main difference. Because the disturbed area and the roads is basically the same, except for that one area. The comparison to the other plats, you know, I, I put in here these site plans of the three other clustered plat development agreements, and... And one of the questions you asked that you were just referencing, was there a different, you know, were, did these other clustered plats impact critical areas as well? And there were buffer reductions, and there were steep slope, you know, that are allowed in the code, and there were filling of wetlands. So they all asked for some kind of adjustments. They didn't all need variances like this one did, but there were buffer reductions and stream crossings, and there were impacts. Are we setting precedents with this development agreement? You know, again, I refer you mostly to the, to the table of deviations, because that's where they're asking to step outside of the code. And then a couple other things I specifically listed, that 10%, asking that 10% of the units be affordable, that's kind of a, kind of a precedent we've been using as we've been negotiating these other development agreements. And then also, you know, using the cottage .5 dwelling unit calculation with regard to density is also something that, again, whether that becomes a precedent or not will be up to you, but it is something that is outside of the code currently. Is this development respectful of the existing landform? Again, you, you start with what is, what is the area that's developable, that's outside of critical areas and buffers, and that is the, where they're allowed to build. And aside from where they've gotten the variances, that's where they're proposing to build, staying out of the critical areas as much as possible. The Talis development agreement, so this was with regard to the, again, the proposed connection. This was what I showed at the Development Commission meeting, and then at the first land and shore meeting, the section that came out of the development agreement, talking about the, the connection. And, and here's an evaluation of how we felt we were meeting those criteria. Is there part of the development agreement promoting elements of sustainability? Not really that outside of the, what, the benefits of clustering. And then the final is the drainage impacts.
Mary Lou, can I ask?
Oh, sorry, totally, yeah. Go ahead.
You got a line in there, it says includes eight cottage units designated as affordable for a 50-year duration.
Right.
How do you, what does it mean in this context to have them designated as affordable?
It would be recorded against the property that it must be affordable for the 50 years.
To what standard?
It's 80% in this case.
Okay, so we're going to do a freestanding 1,300-square-foot cottage, and it's going to be affordable at 80% of AMI?
They're attached, though. The cottages are attached units. So they'll be basically duplex units.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Some of the other information that you had in the packet. You've shown us the alternative preliminary site plan, and you've shown us attachment to the development impacts comparison. Is that the updated table that you showed today?
It is.
And the difference between that table and the table we had in our packet was, was it a change in the calculation?
That was the, the open space comparison. That was, that was the one that's different.
Net site area.
Right.
And maybe you could go to that table for a second and ask a question about net site area?
The open space one?
Attachment, two. Development impacts comparison. Development impacts comparison. We'll see.
Yeah, and that was, that is the one that was in my PowerPoint as well.
Okay, and then where's the version of the other table you showed us today? That's five?
Attachment five, right.
So let's look at attachment five for a second.
And this is the one that Greg walked you through.
Not as different because percentage of net site area was calculated differently?
Well, there's two site areas. There's the gross, the entire site area, and then there's the, what you term net site area as defined in your code, which is used for calculating critical areas, or not critical areas, but open space percentages.
Okay, and that one, Christopher, is online, because everybody can see it. How about attachment three, table of deviations? Is a new, new information added?
This is, hasn't been updated from what we showed at the last land and shore meeting. So again, this is talking about the, how height is being proposed to be calculated versus the rest of the city. And again, the deviation for the setbacks on the exterior of the site. And then also talks about the street deviations.
Okay, yeah, I don't think there have been any changes to that one.
Yeah.
The financial comparison, is that new, attachment four?
It is. And I think I could have the applicant speak to this as well, if he wants to go through it.
I didn't have any questions on this. I'm not sure, did you guys have any questions on this table? Thanks, Christopher. So at this point in time, what I would like to do is allow for some public comment. We have had a lot of public comment on this project already. I would ask that if you have spoken before, you are more than welcome to come up and talk again. We have received all of your letters. They're included as part of the record. All of your testimony has been taped and is part of the record, so if you would like to add new information tonight, feel free to come up to the microphone. Oh, sorry, Christopher.
Will the applicant be given an opportunity to present?
Is there more information then to present first? Do you want to do that, Greg, then first, before we go to public? Thanks.
Okay, so what I wanted to do this evening was, I think a lot of people were, wanted to see how the two projects compared. And I wanted also to demonstrate how the cluster development that we're proposing meets all the goals of the cluster ordinance. And so some of these things have already been covered, so if you've already seen them, I can move forward. But I think the housing, the differences in the housing types is probably important to the conversation this evening. So here is the proposed cluster. Here is a concept of what a traditional plat would look like. And then I've gone ahead and listed, like Christopher did, what the goals are. And then what I've done here, which is pretty groundbreaking, is I've put both maps on the same page. So here, the first goal is achieve the maximum allowable density on developed land while preserving critical areas. And here I've just written, "The proposed cluster development provides the full 78 new homes supported by the underlying zones versus an estimated 40 to 42 lots for the traditional plat, and it does so while preserving additional .7 acres of critical areas and 1.9 acres of tree canopy." And then this here, "Provide more common usable forested open space," says that are not part of platted lots. And again, this entire area here would be, remain forested, and it is usable open space per your code. And here, the differences are pointed out in the acreages. And as Christopher also noted, we've now been in conversation with King County Parks. And they are very interested in accepting all 12 acres of this area into the King County Park system. So, I mean, not only are these folks getting forested open space, but as you point out, they're getting a public park and trail system, literally, or at least in one instance, in their backyard. And then finally, encourage affordable housing through smaller lots, houses. So what I've done here is I've, I've shown the number of lots, the average size of the lots for the two developments that are being proposed, and then the average supported home size for the two lots. So you can see here, we've calculated that the average home size for the cluster development would be a little over 2,900 square feet. And the average square footage for a home in the traditional plat would be about 5,400 square feet. Now, these numbers do not include the affordable homes, the eight affordable homes that would also be included in the cluster development. So you're probably wondering how I came up with these values, and I can explain that to you if you're interested.
Questions on that?
Sure. Okay.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I have one. 5,420 square feet seems like a mathematical, yeah, okay, so somebody could conceivably build a house at 5,420. I just took a second to look up in Zillow. There's not a lot of 5,000-square-foot houses on the market in Issaquah.
Well, I, you know, we believe that these large estate lots would support that, and we believe the market would support it as well. And I guess that's the risk we're willing to take as we move forward.
Did you have a question?
Well, that was the, that was the point I wanted to hear to address. I mean, 5,400 is extremely large.
Agreed, yes. But clearly, I mean, this, this, the cluster does encourage smaller lots and smaller homes.
And I'll just add, I think that's true, because it's still, no matter, no matter what you build, the general rule is that the value of the house should be roughly three times the value of the land, right? And that holds true whether you're building on a 3,000-square-foot lot or a 9,000-square-foot lot, right? Or it usually holds true around here. So I, I don't know if you're, I don't know if you're going to give 5,400 square feet, but I do believe that the cluster is going to wind up with, to your earlier question, I think the cluster is going to wind up with less expensive houses than with these larger lots.
You will, I guess. Well, we'll talk about it during deliberations. Okay.
So I answered your question. Did you want to know how I calculated the square footages? Yes. All right. So on the cluster development, what we looked at, we have a matrix of house sizes that we're looking to place on the, on the, on the development. And about 60% of those homes would be under 3,000 square feet. And so we have a pretty good idea of what homes would be built, and we just summed up the square footages. On the traditional plat, I just took what was the maximum allowable coverage and multiplied that by two, and then subtracted out a garage area of 600 square feet, so, so that's how we got to that. And again, here, I think that this does work. I mean, clearly, the cluster development provides eight designated affordable homes. It provides 74 versus 40 or 42 single-family homes, which increases the housing supply in Issaquah, and it does relieve demand on other housing types. I mean, it's a simple supply and demand equation. And there's no question that the average lot and home size in the cluster development is about 40% smaller than it would be on the traditional plat. Provide more efficient arrangement of structures and providing services and infrastructure. And I think there's a modest gain. Clearly, this, you know, this is going to be for services, emergency services and garbage services. This is going to be a little bit inconvenient, and certainly, these utilities to this part of the site will be difficult to construct and maintain. So that's it.
Thanks, Greg. So we'll go to public comment. And if you could, we had scheduled originally one hour for this portion of our meeting, but we will listen to everyone who wants to speak this evening, and appreciate the fact that so many showed up. So if you just want to raise your hand, I'll point at you and come up, and if you can keep your comments to one to two minutes, that'd be great. Mr. Koppeler, first hand in the air.
Christopher, you might want to put a map up.
Yeah, I would like to.
Give you a zone map.
He does have some maps.
And they got a, they got a hard copy of your map.
Right. And the one I'm looking for, you did receive my map in Trail Suggestion, and I'm not going to go through that, but it could be confusing. Okay, the one I want is conventional plat. Did I not click it? The, the issue here is.
It's 265 feet above sea level at the high up here.
I don't think they'll hear you, Dave, because you're not in a microphone.
So you can use the mouse to point.
That's right, the mouse. So we got a 100-foot gap. Now, they're going to drop, this gets dropped a lot. You know, that's where the 100,000 yards of much of it comes from. Down here, it's circled on your map, the creek. Approximately there is 165. So you're dropping 100 feet to get over to this other developable area. I don't think it's realistic utility-wise, road-wise, grade-wise, so I don't think those four lots are part of the project, realistic evaluation or comparison. You pull those out, and then the amount of open space in that comes very, very similar. So that's just a concern I have. The other issue, I shouldn't need. The 10-foot setback is up against the city property. The city property is CFF. You can put museums, libraries, gyms, all kinds of things on that. I think it's important that the people realize that they're got that short setback and aren't going to expect the city or whoever could develop that, and it can be a private-public partnership, know that they could be right up against them or very close. That just because they got a short setback doesn't mean the city, on the city property, has to have a much longer setback. I don't know how that gets communicated, but I think it's an important consideration. The setbacks between buildings, heat pumps are, can be right up at the property line. So possibly, you could have somebody's heat pump literally five feet from your bedroom. And I think heat pumps, especially in the summer, are air conditioning units, not heating units, and you do not want that proximity. Somehow, we got to deal with that part of the setback, because it's where, that, it's one thing about having your own setback on your own property and limited, but when you can impact other people, that's a concern. And down in Newport, no crosswalk there is a concern. The planting strip, there's no planting strip on the south side, and I think that's, I think even a narrow planting strip. I don't know that we need an eight-foot in the center of the road. I'd rather give more protection to the people on the sidewalks and go narrower in the center and have a planting strip along the, the south sidewalk. And this, I don't know how, how much you can expect the developer to do for off-site improvements on, on keeping pedestrians on that side of, on their side of the road. I think you would want a nice, safe crosswalk and get them over where we're going to have a much wider sidewalk on the north side.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
You know, several members came from adjacent neighborhoods this evening specifically to address a transportation issue, which was whether or not this road would connect through. I wonder if we could have a show of hands to how many people that is the primary reason they're coming to talk tonight, and if there's, which is good for us to see, how many of you are here just for that issue? And if you would like to start by having somebody come up and provide some comments on that, and additional speakers who can add new information, that would be a great way of doing it tonight. So who would like to start within this group? Somebody's got to put their hand up. Julie's up first.
I actually would like to say is, we're going to have the Newport Way meeting next week, and a lot of us, we were never consulted as a community on which side we wanted, the multimodal trail and the Mountain Desire and Greenway. And we would really like to see it on the south side of the street, because that's where the majority of us live. And I know David, and I appreciate and respect David, he says a safe sidewalk, or a safe crosswalk to the other side. That's not possible on that street unless you have a stoplight. Believe me, I've lived there 30 years, and the city keeps trying to do things to make it safe, but unless you stop the cars, it's not going to be safe, and people are going to assume it's safe. The shoulder, and I, if you look at my slides that I presented to the Development Council, it clearly showed that stretch of the road that the city staff is saying, "We just want to widen the shoulder." Tonight, I'm sitting there at the bridge, sign says, "No driving on the shoulder." There was a car zoomed by me on the shoulder, almost scraped his car on the bridge, went ahead, drove on the gravel to turn right. On the other side, there was a car waiting to make a U-turn to pull back to go south on Newport or on S900. The pictures that I showed, also the Development Council, show that consistently, if there's traffic backed up, cars make a right turn onto Newport Way, they come down to any one of those entrances or go as far down as to Oak Crest, zip around, make a U-turn, and come back. That area is not safe for pedestrians unless you have a true sidewalk and separation and barriers, and so that needs to be done. The other thing, looking at the central area plan, the traffic concurrency was based upon a center turn lane all the way along Newport Way. You can't put a center divider in there and take away that area and still get concurrency. So you really do need to update your traffic concurrency and show how this road is going to be built out before you say that it's concurrent. But we need a sidewalk on the south side to make this safe.
Very much, Mary. Someone wanting to talk about the connector road, Karen?
At the last Development Commission meeting and at a recent city meeting with the Talis neighborhood, our Talis neighbors have expressed their vehement opposition to building a connecting arterial between Talis and Newport Way. We just heard Mary talk a lot about that. The city has assured us that the community will not be using this as a through point to cut around traffic on 900. Anybody who has sat there knows that is not a case. And regardless of the opposition to this roadway, the city continues to promote the road as necessary and valuable. The need for emergency access has been proffered as the reason for the road. When the original development agreement and plan for Talis was written, James Bush Road was determined adequate for emergency access. When asked if there had been a need for emergency access in Talis history, both fire and police have indicated there has not been. In 2016, city staff again indicated that the James Bush Road was adequate for emergency egress or access. So why is emergency access paramount to the city today, and has not been since the start of the Talis development? At a meeting with the Talis neighborhood a month ago, when pressed for the need for the road, anybody who has watched that on YouTube, city staff presented a scenario that truly defied comprehension. The only reason for pressing the road is to provide justification for the development as we are discussing this evening. In reading the agenda bill proposed by the city staff, I was struck with the completely biased work that has been presented to the Development Commission and this committee. You were given three alternatives. You were given three alternatives, approve, don't approve, or remand to the Development Commission. But please note, only the "don't approve" option had the negative impacts noted by city staff. Clearly, there are also significant impacts for approval or remanding, and yet, none of that information was provided to you. The city staff has a responsibility for providing factual and unbiased information that will support effective decision-making by our city commissions and the city council. That is their job. They are not here to advocate positions for private individuals. You all deserve better in making effective decisions. We, as citizens of this community, we deserve better. The development agreement that we saw presented...
Karen, I'm going to get you to wrap up if you can.
It doesn't make sense. We oppose the road and we reject the notion that we are justifying this entire development because we need emergency access.
Thank you, Karen. Any new information? I know a lot of residents have shown up about this issue. Would somebody else like to come and address with some new information? Julie.
As of today, we have 170 signatures on a petition opposing the connector road. These people are all concerned about their safety, the safety of their families, the safety of their children, the safety of themselves as pedestrians, as motorists, as residents trying to back out or pull into their own personal driveways, as people trying to cross streets, as other residents are trying to navigate through three- or four-way intersections. The city's reasoning for putting in, wanting to put in this road says, I'm sorry, on page 18 of 18 in the response that Christopher provided, it says, "Public safety was also evaluated and it was determined that a road connection would be a significant benefit to emergency service providers and for residents during emergency situations." More than 170 people in Talis alone disagree with that. And so I'm wondering how we can say that one person or one group of people is going to speak on behalf of all these homeowners or residents of Talis who are clearly opposed to having this road go through. I see the sign that says, "Potential Connector Road." Potential doesn't mean it has to go through. It doesn't mean it will go through. It just means that perhaps there would have been. I think at the last meeting, somebody looked at the plat of Bear Ridge Drive, Bear Ridge Court, and asked, "If there was intended to be a connector road there, would the city have designed that road as it is, as narrow as it is with the angles that it has, with the properties positioned as they are?" And the answer from city staff was, "No, it wouldn't have been designed that way." And still today, the city staff is asking to have this connector road go through. Please, do not do this. I am not done collecting signatures. Every signature I have collected has required five, 10-minute conversations with each individual to explain the proposed development, the proposed road, and the effects that it's going to have on our community. Don't do it.
Thank you, Julie. Anyone else? Ken? Oh, just raising your hand, you agree with her comments. Great. Chris, would you like to speak?
Paul, I want you to know I'm doing it again. I'm going off-script. The owners of these parcels have a right to develop their land. There's no question about that. The development agreement is a contract between the people of Issaquah and the developers of Windward Real Estate Services. So I want to ask you, what's in it for the citizens of Issaquah? Clearly, we've heard that the people in Talis are not supportive of a road and don't see the value in it. We've heard that the folks who live in Newport don't find a lot of value in the proposed enhancements to Newport Way. And it's really hard to get excited about the eight units of affordable housing, which is 8% or almost 10% at 80%, when we just heard the discussion about the Highlands and the targets we've set for the Highlands. So I'm finding it very difficult to find the value in this development for the people of Issaquah. So I'll just leave you with one thought as you deliberate here. What's in it for the people of Issaquah? Because it's pretty clear what's in it for the developer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else would like to speak? Sure, go ahead.
One of the things is on safety, when you come into Trillers, there's a park right there. And kids are running all around, their dogs are running. It's a very active area. And that is exactly where the motorists are going to start speeding up so that they can get through Harvey Manning Park. Also, up where Timber Creek is, there's a stop sign. So now we've got cars who are going to be stopping to go down, starting, so we're going to create a traffic jam and pollution and a lot of noise. So you're taking a quiet community that's been around for 15 years and making it into now almost an inner-city road. So I'm completely opposed to this road going through. If you want to make it as a emergency, I guess, when we talked about Parcels 7, 8, and 9, the city specifically said, "We didn't need another connector road." And now, again, why all of a sudden do we?
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak this evening? Tina.
I think as a resident of Newport Way, we also don't like to see the new road coming down. So we have to have some others alternative roads to divide the traffic and not pull them all on us on Newport Way. I heard it tonight about the full traffic impact, the full traffic counter that was done in 2016 in August and December. You know, I really feel that I can't give you a full counter on the traffic when at the development, there's, there's still 100 construction, 400 units on the gateway, 126 townhouses, so more of the senior home, the development, development of Bergamsna. That, I mean, how can you give a traffic precision incanter? I don't think you could do. You have to put all of this new development together and figure out how many cars individual family will have. And then you can come up with the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Anyone else? Oh, yeah, I was just trying to group those comments together, but if you have comments on any other aspects of the project, please feel free to come up and talk. Thanks, Ken. One more road.
Hi. Thanks again, and I appreciate the guys, the questions you're asking today. I think they're very helpful, and I've actually learned enough to know today, because my concern has primarily been about the road. But now that I hear about the development, it looks generally like a bad idea, just for our community. And I'd actually like to, I mean, I know, so you're, said you're an engineer. They, they talk about these data around these, these, I guess, traffic studies that we've done. How do you create an average out of two data points? They said that they've done two days of research, but you've come up with an average somehow. And I'm fairly certain that's still mathematically impossible. So I think there's just a lot more information that needs to come available. I mean, those traffic studies, when they were done, were there any, was there any construction on Newport at the time? No. When you look at the, the traffic flows and the patterns and the way they work, is this going to be impacted in a massively negative way? Absolutely. Again, to the point that was made earlier, this road seems to be generally to, to make it look like we want to build these high-density houses. I don't see another reason. Just for the sake of clarity and transparency for everybody else that lives here, I don't, still don't understand, and this is like my fifth meeting, why this is a good deal for anybody, whether it's the residents of Talis or the new residents of the Windsward-Bergsma development. There's, this is a lose-lose situation for residents of both communities if this thing gets built. I would like a lot more discussion around the potential slide of this. I look at a plastic nightmare and have for over two years. If you guys want to develop that, that would be a lot cooler than developing this section that my kids play in. To the point that was made earlier about the park that's right there in, in Trillers as you enter. So I coach the T-ball team that plays at Issaquah Elementary School. Some of the kids live on that street, and I have kids that play in openly in that street and in that park on a daily basis. It's been beautiful over the weekend, and if you'd like to take a look at the safety hazard you're creating, please come up there on a nice day during the weekend and just hang out with some of the kids that are playing there. And then imagine forcing a significant amount of vehicles through there on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I know Julie and we live, I live on Bear Ridge Drive, and I just want to...
Can I get you to stand a little closer to the microphone?
Yeah, that might actually work a little better. Basically, I just want to reaffirm what Julie had said. I live on 801 Bear Ridge Drive. That road is not wide, and it's going to connect to Shangri-La Way, which is a two-lane road that has bicycle paths on both sides. If UPS comes up on Bear Ridge Drive and makes a, a delivery, traffic can't get through. On the day when there's trash collection, the trash truck comes up. And this new access road is going to be used like Talis Drive, which has got a center lane. I mean, 900 homes are going to be trying to go through that area. We can't take that. I mean, literally, my three kids go across that road all the time to go to the park. I mean, you'll destroy that community if you start using that like Talis Drive. So really, that's, that's all I really have to say about this. As I said, I wasn't planning. I didn't have formal notes.
Thank you very much, Jennifer, standing up.
But I just felt like I should, you know, have my voice heard too.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? Do the lady in the front and then the lady behind. Oh, you're just saying, "I agree." Okay. Thank you very much.
I don't have anything new to say, but I want to underline something. I'm from the Newport Way residents. And, you know, I just want, I want people to understand that we're not being unreasonable about this. You know, we're having 1,000 new cars added into our neighborhood because of the new development that's going along Newport. That's a lot of vehicular traffic and thousands of daily vehicular traffic. So what, what I want to say is that, please understand, when you add in a shortcut to go to Talis from Newport, you're inviting additional traffic to Newport, which is already completely jammed. It just doesn't seem respectful to either neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
I think one of the big decisions you guys are looking at is the steepness of this grade and this, the slope they're building on. And when I was looking through the tons of information that they brought to the table, I noticed there were some inconsistencies that maybe need to be looked at as you look through it. One of them is an erosion response to a CEPA environmental checklist. And the question was, "Could erosion occur based on which geological formation the development is occurring on?" And the response was, "Erosion is a concern during construction and must be considered and mitigated with site work permits." So that, that was a handle on it there. Then another question on the next page was talking about the truck traffic and how much more tons of dirt are going to be removed. And the, and the question was just about the trucks, but the response was, "While the site soils are not inherently suspectable to erosion, as the site is a forested hillside, the proposed element will require grading and excavation activities across..." So I did make note of a few of the consistencies, so as you're looking through this. The most important part of the erosion and the instability of the area was the Alderwood and Everett Formation covering 51% of the site. That was an important question that you did raise and wasn't answered. So that information is coming forward too. And there's some more, I'm going to submit my things, because I don't want to take more time here. But the traditional plat may result in slightly less impervious area, so the vault could be slightly smaller. This was a comment made about using the vault on the, on the traditional plat. So here we're saying that the traditional plat will have less impervious area, but in the next area, they say that the cluster plat will have less. So I did make note of these, and I'm going to hand that in. And then both the traditional and the cluster plotting comparisons were all based on that part where five homes will be built. And like I back what David had said, that it's just not feasible from an economic standpoint to build those houses. I can't believe that they will do that if they don't get granted the cluster. And then lastly, I just keep hearing about the affordable housing, and it's being used as a carrot to, to pass unbelievable things. And I know that's been mentioned, and I want to mention that one more time, because that's not what the purpose of it is.
Susan, thanks. If you could hand in your comments to Keith, that would be great. Anyone else?
So I think this development agreement is a bad idea and should be rejected. And I got 10 reasons why. So number one, I think it enables development of Northeast Cougar Mountain that wouldn't ordinarily have happened on its own following traditional development. And that's enabled through variances and through the density that you're allowing. The second reason is, you're developing on steep slopes. Look at the newspaper, nine articles in the last 30 years about hillsides in Issaquah where development has happened on steep slopes. The geotags don't always get it right. We know that from our experience in Talis parcel line. Number three, it puts our taxpayers at risk for bailing these failed projects out. You know, read those newspapers again, last 30 years. How many times has the city had to take taxpayers' money when these hillsides happen and these developments go sour? Number four, we lose the acres of mature forest up there. Because this project has enabled this development, it creates a scar on Cougar Mountain. Five, you can't eliminate the impact of trucking 88,000 cubic feet of soil off that mountain. I don't care where you route those trucks, unless you can beam them Star Trek-style to some faraway place. They're going to go through Issaquah. You can't eliminate that. The sixth reason is, those Newport Way residents have suffered enough. I mean, that development there and all of the misery, you know, you're going to do it again to them. Please don't do that. Seventh reason, the community gets too little in exchange for enabling this. This is peanuts what, what we get out of this. The, the, the give-to-get is not a good deal for us. And quite frankly, when I look at standard development versus this, there's actually some benefits to going the other way. I just don't see this as a swinging great deal. Number eight, there's no support for this in the community. I don't see a lot of people standing up at this podium and saying, "We got to do this. This is great for the community. This is great for Issaquah." So nine is a two-parter, and I would just say that put your red pens back in your pocket, because fine-tuning a bad agreement just results in a fine-tuned bad agreement. And the second part of that is, voting for a bad agreement because you think the alternative is even worse is not a good reason to vote for it. And the 10th reason is, you're good names and reputation. Residents of the city are fed up with the impacts and results of bad development. Voting for this DA just affirms the status quo. It looks like a sweetheart deal to the developers. You know, I can say personally, the residents of Talis are reminded every day of failed development, Parcels 7, 8, and 9, the plastic mountain, the unfinished pump station. So pick one of those 10 reasons, pick them all. I don't care. But at the end of the day, just let nature take its course. Please don't agree to this development agreement, and please don't put your good names on this bad idea. Thanks.
Ken, no applause, please, but we do recognize that a lot of you put your hands up to support that comment. I'm looking for Jill Dean. I think she's next.
My name is Geraldine Carey, and I've been up here quite a few times. I just submitted two pamphlets to the city earlier this afternoon that has to do with the study done by Riley. And it has to do with the critical areas evaluation and preliminary, preliminary geotechnical engineering. And I, I had been ignorant that they existed, although I should have known they were out there. And I got two of maybe five reports. And one, the two that I received were written in April of 2015 and June of 2016. And they talk about the hazards of this piece of property. They talk about the potential for erosion or landslides. And with all this, they follow it up with, if you do this, then you're going to prevent this from happening. If you do this, then it's going to not happen. It will help alleviate maybe the potential for landslide or some type of earth movement. But it doesn't say that they guarantee that it will not happen. And I, as a citizen in the city of Issaquah, do not want to see my money going towards fixing roads that should have never been built, houses that should have never been built, on hillsides that are steep. In one of the emails I got, there was an article or a comment, and I, I don't know, I think somebody said that it was addressed, but I just want to make sure. There was an email sent on August 22nd of 2016, and it says, blank and blank, and I have both gone through the list. Based on our review, we have highlighted four areas in yellow as being conditions that are beyond what we typically think is required for a project on a sloping site. The four highlighted items likely rise the level of special permitted conditions. The remaining items seem like standard condition, conditions required for development of slope site that are included in the TESC plans and standard speculations. So I just want to know if you know of these four items and what they are. And I think this piece of land has a lot of bad earth sloping, steep hillside and stuff. And I think, you know, if it hasn't been looked at, I think you should look at it and see what the conditions were before you make or permit this, you know, development to go through. And I also think that the city is getting sucked into what the development will provide, better Newport Way and affordable housing. But the reality, the reality is if this piece of land has potential for slides and earth movement, I think that, you know, it's, you know, a detriment to our community to support the development of this land. So I hope if you need to put it in, do 40 homes and no connection to Talis is, is my maximum. I mean, I would prefer nothing because of the impact to Newport Way. Thank you.
Thank you, Geraldine. And if you have information there written down or emails that you would like to leave here, we have received a bunch of information this evening we haven't had a chance to go through.
Okay, I submitted it to, to Keith?
Yeah.
Oh, to Christopher. I'm sorry.
And we got a package from-
I sent an email in for her, too, though.
Oh.
A package from Christopher tonight that we didn't get to because it came just before the meeting, so.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you very much. Anyone else who has not had a chance to speak? So I want to thank you all for coming. This is probably maybe even the fourth or fifth time you've had to come before a committee or council or even just an open house to speak about your concerns. We appreciate it. It's very helpful. I'm going to now come back to council deliberations, but I'm going to ask my fellow council members if we could break this into two parts. There is a large group of people here that are really primarily focused on a road connection, whether there's a development agreement or not. And what I would like to do is have us talk about that particular piece and the Development Commission's recommendation, and then move on and work through the other issues with the development agreement, if that makes sense. Paul, you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So the package that came before us had a recommendation for staff to connect the road as a full arterial connected road. The Development Commission reviewed it and recommended an emergency-only access. The third option on the table is nothing. So we're, right now, the agenda bill, as it reads, is fully connected road. Paul?
This cries out for a Bollard emergency access system, the way James Bush does.
I think they call it Opticon now. They use an Opticon gate.
An Opticon gate. What's the difference?
The Bollard one requires someone to get out of a truck to do something. Opticon gate does not.
I see. Okay. This cries out for emergency access only. And the only way I would support this would be if there was only emergency access connection between Talis and the top of this development.
Paul, any thoughts?
Yeah, last time, when we met last month, I asked the question about the design of the, and the layout of, in the Talis area. And if it, and if we were designing for a connection at that location at the time Talis was being designed, would we, would we design it and lay it out the way it is now? And the answer was no. And that sealed the fate for me. Talis is not at all prepared or able, or should it be connected to this road?
Okay, so I, I agree with both of you. And what I would like to do now is just put that issue aside. And whatever recommendation we make tonight to yes or no on the development agreement, there'll be a recommendation that that road be emergency access only.
That was my intent as well, if it were to be built at all.
So there, there is not a decision this evening? That is a recommendation that this committee is making to the full council at?
Uh, well, it depends.
Is it Monday's meeting?
June 19th.
June 19?
So the agenda bill's suggesting June 19th.
Okay.
I don't know that you're going to be ready for that, but-
Okay. So-
We'll see.
So this project is complicated. So we've, we've put that one aside. And if there were people here just to hear if it's going to be recommended as emergency access or full road, you have your answer. This committee tonight at the end, when we're summing up, will recommend emergency access only. Nothing more. So I heard a bunch of other topics tonight that we should talk about. And I'm not really sure how you guys want to structure this conversation. When this project proposal first came, it came as a development agreement. It did not come as a compare this to that. So it appears that the property owners also have the option to develop as a standard subdivision. And rather than go down into the weeds right away, maybe I'll just ask you the question is, are you ready to talk about whether or not you want to enter into a DA or allow the project proponent to proceed with the standard subdivision? What are your thoughts on that? Tola?
So there's no question to me that if we don't move forward to the development agreement, that this will get built as a standard subdivision. The base of Squawk Mountain is getting standard subdivisions all over the place. It's what's getting built. So the idea that somehow nothing's going to get done here and that it's going to get left pristine is, is just not going to happen. So the question is between a standard subdivision and this clustered. The clustered, to me, looks a lot like how Talis looks. You know, there's, it's got a higher density. And so there's no question that there is precedent in the city to do clustered. The question to me, and I guess where I'm still on the fence a little bit, and I'd like to hear from my fellow council members, is whether they believe that there is benefit to support the higher, the higher traffic that'll come from having more housing units on the hillside there. And that's where, that's just where I think the question is.
Okay, well, let's start with that, and we'll weigh in on that one. Paul, what are you thinking in terms of the clustered versus standard subdivision?
Well, Tola, Tola made a number of points there. And yes, I think it came to us as a development agreement for clustered. And, and however, it is, it, we are called upon to consider the alternative that, that now we have more information about. Because I do agree with Tola, because what hasn't been mentioned, we've, we've also received a lot of communication from, not only from the developer-
Property owners.
But the property owners and, and the extended family there. And, and I think you can rest assured, at least I feel pretty sure from that communication that something will be done. Something will be done. It's not a, a do-nothing. And, and there was a comment earlier this morning, which I, or excuse me, this evening, which I was glad to hear, is that we, we respect the rights of the property owners to do with what's allowed on the land. And of course, there are constraints within this. And, and when it comes to critical areas and steep, including steep slopes and, and sensitive areas. So they still would have to live within those constraints. So, so something will get done. So I found this, we have one of the summaries, it's on page 321 of 336 within the original, the full packet, where, and Chris, you had shown this earlier, it had, had this comparison between total, it compared total area to be developed, critical area impacts, tree canopy impacts, grading volume, number of lots, designated affordable homes, Talis emergency access, Newport Way improvements, and possible public park dedication. So, and so, you know, there, there is, what's, I think the thing that's most difficult in here, that, or that's missing from here, because I think these are quantifiable. If you just wanted to be numbers, and you, you could look in these. But what, what's not in this list of comparison, I think, is, is, it, it does list Newport Way improvements. And it would be full road both sides versus, versus only half the road. But the, but the, what's not listed is the additional impact to the region and to the Newport Way residential area to the additional homes and the additional traffic that, that it would create. And I think that's a very strong negative against the clustered home development. Proposal?
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow.
I think the additional impact of the, the additional residential units and ongoing, you know, and the additional traffic that means to the Newport area, Newport Way residential area, is, is an overwhelming negative impact.
So my thoughts on it are similar, but coming from a slightly different angle. I read the clustered housing provision as, I think it needs some work in the future. But, Keith? But going through and reading it as I did, I really feel like there are advantages to this project. There's definitely some stuff you can put in the positive column that it does versus a standard subdivision. The clustered housing provision seems to have three main components to me. One, which is a benefit to the developer, which is getting to use all of the housing units you can. The other two are benefits to the city, smaller lots with smaller homes. And to me, that was going directly towards the small, a affordable housing. I have a really hard time saying putting a 2,900-square-foot house on a 3,000-square-foot lot is, is what this piece of code was intended to do. This piece of code was intended for, in order to allow the developer to build all the units, the city was going to, the city, the citizens, the residents, we were going to get some benefits that balance out. So yes, there's some affordable housing units in there, but I don't think, I don't think it meets the intent of this code. I think this is a difficult site, difficult to build on, difficult to develop. Look at the variances, look at the deviations, look at all that has to be done to make it work. And then to try and do it under a code that was meant to do something else. And so this is not the right code in my mind. And as much as I think a standard subdivision may also not be the highest and best use of land, it is the appropriate part of the code to use to, to develop this area. So I'm not in favor of recommending the development agreement at all. I am interested in making sure that if it goes through as a standard subdivision, some of the concerns that we heard today about other issues such as erosion control, landslide trucking, there's still a lot in here. And so even going forward as a standard subdivision, this is going to be a difficult project, and it needs to be permitted and conditioned to reflect that. Subdivisions don't go through the Development Commission. There is no public process. We're yet here tonight if it doesn't go through as a development agreement. So depending on where we stand at the end on how we want to move on this, I think we need to also direct staff or go back to council and ask to direct staff to make sure that this very difficult site has the kinds of conditions and, and permit requirements on it that make it safe to build. And that may be outside. Okay, I'm done talking. No. So I'm, I'm not in favor of recommending approval of a development agreement at this time at all. Tola?
So I don't know if I'm supposed to say it, but I'm glad you're both running for mayor. You've both clearly spent a lot of time on this and have come up with different, but really strong arguments on why to not do this. And I was looking for some thoughts on it, and I got them. And so I support both you guys that I don't think we should move forward as a development agreement.
And I agree with it. You're probably not supposed to say stuff like that.
Well, I won again.
So I would defer to staff, and it looks like the recommendation coming out tonight is for this to go back to council on regular business with a recommendation not to approve the development agreement.
I have a question about that. Do we say somewhere in there that even as a, as a standard subdivision development, we want to see a whatever gate at the top that's for emergency access only?
Would you do it at council?
Um, so you can, I mean, so there's no council involvement in the standard subdivision process. You guys can, as individuals, comment and participate in that public process. It would be who of staff to have gleaned some lessons and nuggets from all of the public comments that have come. So we're not starting from scratch. So if the applicant were to come in with a standard subdivision, the staff report would need to reflect, I would think, the bevy of public comments that have been gathered through both the Development Commission process. And so it's going to get, it has a much, much more light has been shined on this particular application if it moves forward than any of the others that go through the standard process. That's a benefit that comes out of all the time that's been spent up to this point. Thank you.
That's it for this issue, then? So I'm going to ask for a four-minute recess before we take up the last item. Thanks.